Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Jim Elwood. I'm the Airport Director here in Jackson. I have the honor of representing your airport tonight. I will try to speak up. Thank you for the reminder. Once again, I'm Jim Elwood. I'm the Airport Director. We're joined tonight by the individual and the corporation that's interested in providing scenic aircraft or air helicopter tours, Tony Chambers. He'll give you a presentation in a few minutes about what he has in mind. I'd also like to welcome the Jackson Air Airport Board that's seated along the side of the wall over here. They're here to listen. When we put this meeting together, the intent is that the community, and the board felt strongly about this, that the community should have its opportunity to share with the applicant directly what their thoughts, concerns, all look like. So, tonight is about that. So, the information that's going to be transferred from Tony, shared with you, and vice versa back to Tony. We want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. So, tonight, we're going to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. If you can possibly do that, we very much appreciate it. Additionally, just to ensure that everybody gets a chance to share their thoughts, it's okay if, for example, you stand up and say, "I support what Joe said," or "I'd like to emphasize what Bob said," or someone else, or Mary, however that might work. That'll work out just great. That'll allow this evening to go pretty efficiently, I hope. The goal here is to be, we have the room through 6:30, so we're anxious to try to keep that going if we possibly can. Let's see, we've got standing room only. Thank you for that. We also wanted to share with you a couple of kind of logistics. You've got, hopefully on your way in, you picked up one of these flyers. In addition to the guest shot that the Airport Board posted in last Wednesday's paper, I think it's a good indication about kind of how this process has worked, and it also has a key phrase on the bottom that I draw your attention to. Before we get started tonight, I think it's important that you know that there really are three entities that can, with the authority, to prevent this activity. They are the United States Congress, the FAA, and the applicant.
And the applicant?
The applicant. All right? So, I want you to keep that perspective in play, as the Airport Board's ability to turn this down is limited. So, it's key that you share your information clearly and distinctly tonight, and I hope that that all works. Additionally, we'll be videoing this event tonight, so recognize that your comments will be on record. Our intent is to have this video posted to the airport's website, along with a summary, as best we're able to provide, on the airport's website as quickly as possible. In this same flyer, you have a handy QR code to help you get that same information. So, I hope you find that helpful. How we're going to handle kind of the flow of tonight includes Tony's presentation, Mr. Chambers' presentation to you about what he's proposing. In addition to that, we have at least one elected official stepping away from another key meeting over at the Town Council that would like to be able to follow up and jump in before we open it to general public comment. Once again, if we can keep those comments to three minutes, it'd be very much appreciated. And I'm not sure exactly how we're going to sequence that, but if you can kind of be ready, and we can kind of keep the flow of this going, it would probably make us all a little more comfortable to get home and out of this cold temperature tonight. Yes, sir?
Can I ask you, is anybody here from the FAA tonight?
The FAA is not here tonight.
Which officer of the FAA would be the one in question to have to get involved in this?
Well, I think Joe Albright's going to talk here in a few minutes, but the FAA Division that handles this is called Flight Standards Division. It's not the area that is normally held by the airport, is our closest relationship within the FAA. I think Joe chose to write to the FAA Administrator directly, as I recall, and that was certainly a path that's available to you. All right. Any other organizational questions as we get started?
Is this item going to be on your board meeting until this week?
Oh, thank you for saving me from myself on that one. It is not on Wednesday's agenda. The applicant, out of respect of the feedback that he'd already gotten and through his outreach, the Town Council had also asked for some more time. He graciously postponed, placing it on the Airport Board Agenda until at least February. There is no January Airport Board Meeting, so the next opportunity that might be in front of the Board is February 17.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
All right.
Court question. If it's considered competing commerce, are you allowed to refuse it?
Competing commerce. I'll have to process that one, and maybe I can get an answer for you later in the deck. All right. With that, we're going to have Tony go ahead and give his presentation, and then, from there, we'll kind of find out if we've got Jim Stanford or any of the Town Councilors with us. Otherwise, we'll roll into the comment section. So, it's my pleasure to welcome Tony Chambers. I can tell you that Tony has, at the Airport Board's request, gone out and done quite a bit of community outreach. Perhaps he's spoken to several of you in the room already, but he has been open to hearing thoughts, and we'll ask tonight that if you please respect each other, respect the applicants, and share your thoughts as concisely as you can. So, with that, Mr. Chambers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, everyone, for showing up, and thank you very much for being passionate about your community and your views, and I appreciate that. So, like Jim said, my name's Tony Chambers. I own Wind River Air, which is based out of Western Wyoming.
Louder, please. There's a microphone, I think, right there for me.
I think that's for recording, actually. But I'll just speak a little louder.
It's in the closet, so we could do that.
Okay, I'll try to speak louder. So, I'm Tony Chambers. I own Wind River Air. Appreciate you all coming out, and I appreciate you all for being very passionate about your community and the community's goals. So, just a little bit about me. I own Wind River Air. I'm the sole owner. I've lived in Western Wyoming for the majority of my life, and I'm a third-generation Wyomingite. I'm also an avid outdoorsman, and I spent 22 years volunteering for search and rescue and trying to give back. I live here in Teton County. I believe in the community, and I'm passionate about the area, the mountains, and the greater So, Wind River Air, just a little snapshot of my small helicopter company. It's one helicopter. It's a Robinson R-44. It's currently hangared at the Pine Dale Airport, and I have been working towards this non-tentate special use agreement at the Jackson Air Airport for, it's actually more than a couple of years now. So, my goals with Wind River Air, and in particular with this application, is to provide, number one, a safe, enjoyable experience, and is to provide scenic helicopter rides from the Jackson Air Airport that depart the airport and arrive back at the airport. My number two goal is noise mitigation and best practices. I also, number three, is that truly, I know this group's going to be hard to come into this, but I truly want to become an asset to the community with this service. So, there's been a fair bit of talk about safety. Joe's going to, I think, talk about it a little bit, and I've met with him, and so I just want to hit on that briefly. Safety is my number-one priority, no matter what I do with scenic flights or otherwise. It's always going to be my number-one priority. Just to kind of touch on the statistics that have come up, particularly in Joe's report of 125 fatalities in the last 30 years in the air tour, the helicopter air tour industry. I don't want to downplay that statistic by any means, and it's tragic to lose 125 lives, but I do want to try and compare those numbers realistically with the statistics of how many passengers has the air tour industry successfully carried. And I've actually got HAI, which is Helicopter Association International. They're working on, they have those numbers, and they're putting together those statistics, but it'll be in the millions. So, just need to kind of put that in perspective, that the air tour, helicopter air tour industry has had many, many, many safe passenger carries. The R-44 in particular is a little bit of a target aircraft as far as safety, and the biggest reason for that is it's the number-one aircraft, number-one ceiling aircraft in the world, so it's very popular with private owners, private owners with little experience, and they're involved in a high number of accidents. It's also a high choice for student instruction and schools, flight schools, to use for student instruction, and it's inherent with student pilots that have little or no experience trying difficult maneuvers, that they're being involved in accidents. Really, the take-home that I want to just convey is that all aircraft have limitations. I'm sure there's a few pilots in the room that would agree to this, and all those limitations need to be respected. So, just a little bit about my proposal that I'm putting forth here, trying to put in front of the Jackson Air Airport Board. I'm proposing daylight hours only. I'm proposing a year-round operation, probably in all likelihood with, you know, either off-season shutdowns or slowdowns, and then, of course, weather and demand warranty. Greenhouse gas mitigation, I can't deny the fact that this will add to the footprint. You know, it is a fuel-burning aircraft. The only thing I can propose there in return is to make the operation as efficient as possible, make every flight efficient, as efficient as it can be. I never have had the intention of flying in or over Grand Teton Park. That has never been the intention. The intention is to always fly outside of the park. As far as wildlife goes, it has never, there's never been, it never has been the intention to make these wildlife viewing tours or rides. That is not the intention. Just a little collage here about my background, just to try and get a little bit of litty that I am from Western Wyoming, and I have grown up here, and I do recreate here from, you know, from early till now. I'm an out-hiker, climber, skier, mountain biker, boater. I enjoy the Tetons and the Wind River Mountains on a regular basis, and because of this background, I'm keenly aware of the noise sensitivity of my proposal and the other sensitivities. I'm very aware of that, and I want to do the right thing, and I want to try and make those impacts as little as possible. So, as far as noise, kind of the number-one feedback I'm getting and getting from the community is the noise, and this proposal, my proposal, will add to the noise footprint. I'm not trying to deny that. Noise sensitivity is going to be of utmost importance to me, and I recognize this. I have taken classes at HIA on noise mitigation, which maybe that sounds a little silly to you, but there is ways to fly aircraft to mitigate noise, and there are techniques for it. Probably more importantly, or most importantly, I'd like to work with groups that will work with me to create best possible routes to impose the least possible impact, and also the least possible impact on people and wildlife. So, this is my proposed map that is in my application to the Jackson Air Airport Board. I just need to point out a couple of really key things here. There's a box in the upper-right-hand corner, so I'm going to blow up, and then I'm going to read it to you. It says, "Proposed routes are for illustrative purposes only. Wind River Air LLC recognizes that tours must remain half a mile outside of the Teton National Park boundary, except during takeoff and landings at the Jackson Air Airport. Additionally, noise concentrations will occur over existing noise corridors as much as possible." So, really, what I'm trying to convey here, here's kind of a blow-up of the proposed routes. This came from existing routes and, you know, and existing scenic flights that actually occur. These are proposed, they're changeable with input. There's nothing set in stone with these, and I just want to put that out. They're just big lines, and they don't specifically mean I'm trying to fly over someone's house or someone's area or whatnot. It's just they're proposed routes. Kind of building on that, they can be customized, they can be changed, and I'm striving for minimal impact. Just to touch a little bit on the heli-emergency, the other helicopters that are in the valley doing emergency response, the Grand Teton National Park Summer Contract Helicopter in Teton County, SARS Winter Contract Helicopter. I just want to state as a pilot, and I'm sure there's other pilots in the room that can attest to this, that there will be no conflict with those helicopters. Those helicopters are piloted by extremely experienced and seasoned pilots. They're used to talking to their aircraft, they're used to working in busy airspace, they're used to working on busy fires. They're going to be going a complete different direction than this proposal, than my helicopter would ever be going, and the reality of it is that the Jackson Air Airport's Class Delta airspace, which is a controlled airspace, but it's the least busy of the controlled airspaces, and I think any pilot will tell you that it's not a particularly busy airspace, even though if you live there, it probably sounds busy, but if you fly an aircraft there, it's not particularly busy. But just kind of wanted to eliminate that one. Happy to answer more questions on that, or I'm sure they would too, the people from, you know, the pilots from those helicopters. Just a little, pretty important tidbit I want to point out, which maybe some of you know, some of you don't, but I can operate these scenic flights, or anybody could, right now, today, from another airport, whether it's Pine Dale, whether it's Alpine Driggs, come into the Jackson Air Airport for the day, fly scenic flights, go home at night, with no permit required, no oversight, no input from the community, no input from the airport. So, just a little tidbit. I'm going down this whole road because I'm trying to get input, I'm trying to solicit the community's, trying to solicit the community's input, and I'm trying to create something that will work, that's possible to work. So, important. Another probably key tidbit, I applied to the Federal Aviation Administration, the FAA, and received what's called a Letter of Authorization under what's the FAR 91147 is the regulation, and I received that Letter of Authorization. It was dated August 29th, 2018. So, as far as the FAA goes, I have applied to do this, to provide scenic helicopter rides, originating and returning to the Jackson Air Airport, and received that approval from the FAA. So, kind of pull it back, kind of try and get a little more positive here, and pull it back to my goals. I truly do want to become an asset to the community, and I want to give back, I want to give back somehow, and that's with my meetings and my outreach, with meeting with people and groups. I've asked, I've solicited, says, "Give me your ideas on ways that I can take my services and do the community some good," and whether it's donating flight time or services, tours a common goal or a good goal, or whether it's becoming an educational tool for the community, whatever it is, I actually need that feedback back to help me try and develop that. As Jim mentioned earlier with a question, out of respect to the Town of Jackson and the community, we were scheduled to come before the Airport Board, it's on the agenda in two days, on the 18th, and we have postponed that to a later date. I would like to wrap it up in the next 60 days. That's my goal. So, Wind River Air and myself, I welcome constructive input, but I'm asking three things of you. When you give me input, give me your legitimate concerns, give me an opportunity to address your concerns, and then give me your ideas on how I can give back to this community. That's what I'm asking in return. That's it. There's my contact information. Feel free to call, email. I'll get back to you as soon as I absolutely can. And I'm happy to, after tonight, later tonight, down the road, I'm happy to meet with anybody, talk on the phone, whatever it takes.
Could you leave that up there? The contact information.
All right. So, Tony shared with you kind of what he has in mind. He has been anxious to hear feedback from all of you, so I also think there's, has Mr. Stanford arrived by chance? All right. If anybody happens to see Mr. Stanford in the back sometime, please let me know. Are there questions to Tony that you would like relative to his presentation? And what I think makes sense here, depending upon how many there are, is, Tony, that you could summarize them in kind of one package rather than each individual question, just to kind of keep things flowing. Yes, sir, in the back?
I'm just curious if he anticipated one or two parts a day, 10 a day? I realize it's a demand issue, but just go ahead.
All right. There's how many? What other questions do we have, right up here?
Well, now, why, so what is the business plan of how much would it be costing, how many people daily runs? So, we have a sense of the magnitude of this, and what his expectation is to be successful.
All right. Number of operations, kind of business model, yes, sir?
Didn't hear anything about it. His education and background in flying helicopter, and also in the last five years, 13 fatal accidents with the R-44. You get up in the crosswinds, up in the high mountains, anything can happen.
All right. So, a little more on the safety issue, yes, sir?
Yes, I have a question on the laden R-44 operating ceiling. I know the unladen is 14,000 feet, but what's the laden with four souls and fuel?
All right. So, the service ceiling of the helicopter, are you writing some of these down, Tony? All right. Yes, sir.
The opposite of that is what is the intensity getting, how low is it?
Okay. Lowest elevation expected? Yes, sir, in the back?
What's to stop 16 other people opening up helicopter tour operations in the same location?
Well, you hit on exactly why Congress and the FAA has that authority. It is important to note that the FAA has absolute authority over airspace and aircraft safety.
So, is it just one, or could there be five others, or four others, or six?
There's not a way to predict that. Back over here.
Yeah, I'm just, you quoted in something I saw, it was talks about reasonable terms without unjust discrimination in providing this permit, and I didn't know whether you could elaborate on what that means.
You know, we're lucky to have the airport's attorney here tonight, who actually litigated this issue back 30 years ago, so I'll ask him to take that question in a minute. Yes, ma'am?
Just some clarification on the flight plan. It looks like it comes out of the airport directly towards Quilant Junction, or is it coming out where the airplane is coming and out?
All right. So, a little more detail about how it gets in and out of the airport, okay? Yes, sir?
You know, you can hear this noise from helicopter a good mile away. So, that's four square miles that you can hear all this racket. I don't like that.
We're going to get to public comment in just a moment. Joe?
Jim, are you planning to transmit this recording of this meeting to the FAA?
We plan on summarizing it, and we'll forward it to those that may have interest in the FAA, including the people you've sent to. Joe? Yes, sir?
Yeah, just a little bit, we have specifics on what the noise is at a mile or a half a mile, and also, I'm not really very familiar with this helicopter. I've flown in a lot of other helicopters years ago. I believe this is a single-engine helicopter. Is that also, a little more elaboration of just the specifics of the helicopter?
Okay. A little bit about your noise signature, Tony?
Yes, sir. If you're successful, does the FAA adding more helicopters?
All right. Are there more helicopters in the future? All right. Back over here.
From what I've read, the town, the county, the park have no true control over if this is going to happen, and that there's no hangar space is the one thing that might make it not happen now. Is that true, that there is no way to say no? No real way?
Well, when I opened, I shared that the real folks who have the authority to say no are at the United States Congress and at the FAA. And one more question, and then we need to get on to Q and A. Yes, sir?
What kind of data and reports have been consulted about the impacts of wildlife or any potential impacts of wildlife? How is that being talked and already just wiped out of the plans?
So, wildlife question and their impacts, is that it? Okay. All right. I'm, all right, I'm going to take one more. I can see you way in the back.
I can't hear either the questions or the answers back here, but perhaps you could address emissions issue in this day and age of climate change and environmental sensitivity. Both of the cars are coming and going as well as the aircraft itself.
All right. So, greenhouse gases, environmental impacts of those trips. Can you hear me any better in the back if I project a little more? Does that help?
Yes.
All right. All right. So, Tony, you've got your list of questions.
I've got one. If this entitlement, I personally hope it is, what's to say that the flight plan and the operating plan that was put up there, losing control of that, wanting to land and take off the airport? Just got to say so.
Well, that's an FAA route issue. If he's avoiding the national park by half a mile, then his negotiations really are with the FAA about what he does once he gets in the air, so.
Do they, excuse me, but do they negotiate that? I mean, he's going to be just subject to any sort of normal helicopter FAA regulations, right? They're not going to give him a specific route or prevent a specific route? That's not the way it works. He's going to do what he wants.
Well, there's an opportunity for you to share how you would like that to be structured, and he can listen to that, so.
I just want to establish that once he gets the entitlement to land at the airport and take off there, he can do whatever he wants, or we have to petition the FAA.
Well, that's true today, though. He can take off as other aircraft can come and go from the airport as defined by what's approved by the FAA. So, Tony, you want to take a stab at some of those answers?
Yeah, I can try. There's kind of a lot of questions, and I'll try. Number of flights, I'll just kind of go down through my list here. Number of flights is undetermined. I'd like for it to start as a small operation, and literally, I see the start as several days a week, several flights a day. Could that grow into more? It could, but I don't envision this thing growing into something big. I don't envision it growing into multiple helicopters. I do envision potentially growing into better technology helicopters. As quieter technology comes out, as more eco-friendly helicopters come out, I would like the opportunity, you know, have that ability to try and update that. As far as the accidents, the R-44 in general, it is a four-seat helicopter. It is a reciprocating engine helicopter. It does have a service ceiling of 14,000 feet, and it does have limitations, like all helicopters. And you've read, there's been plenty of accidents, there's plenty of limitations with it. All I can say to that helicopter is it is a good, reliable aircraft. It has millions of hours on it, and I can tell you wholeheartedly that I do more than respect the limitations that that helicopter has, and how I do that is many, but basically staying way away from its limitations and its max gross weight and respecting those limitations. As far as altitudes, kind of ties into routes, that is not yet determined, and honestly, like, I would like input from specific groups in the community, whether it's wildlife, whether it's whatever, but basically, I'd like to develop, those altitudes need to be developed, the routes need to be developed. In my mind, they need to be low enough to be an enjoyable flight, but high enough to not disturb people and wildlife and keep safety paramount. So, those are not determined, but I would like to see, I would like to see those, I would like to see input to develop routes, routes and altitudes that make sense and leave as little impact as possible. So, probably one of the bigger ones to tackle would be other, what is to keep other groups, other helicopter companies coming in, following whatever, setting a precedent? I don't have a very good answer to this one because I cannot control the market. All I can do is control my company, my intentions, try and do the right thing myself. The airport does not have the ability to track that, you know, to, you know, prevent the market from coming in. I think really all I can do is, honestly, I'm surprised that this hasn't happened before, that it hasn't, there hasn't been, I mean, I realize in 2000 what happened. I'm surprised there hasn't been other companies try this. My answer to it, my only genuine answer to it is, is I see a solution is forming a working group with the community, with myself, with players, with maybe someone from the airport. with the community, with myself, with players, maybe someone from the airport, and try and set, and maybe with what I do, I set a precedent. I set kind of ground rules of my own that paves the way for others to come or to not. And I guess that's the best I can do, is offer to be part of the solution and not part of the problem or the problem. That's all I can do, is offer to try and be, let me go through the rest of my list. Noise levels, there's, there's a lot of data out there as far as noise of aircraft. I think that the R-44, it emits something like 78 decibels. It's, I'm not a noise expert, so I'm not going to go down this path, but it's, you know, it is going to, it is going to add to the noise footprint. It's not the most noisy aircraft out there by any means. And there's probably a lot that can be done as far as studies, but I can't, I can't, you know, cite for you, you know, all of that data right now. The plan and the oversight, I kind of touched on that as far as a working group forming.
The emissions issues?
The emissions, greenhouse gas emissions. So it is a, it is a fuel-burning helicopter, like all helicopters. They haven't come out with electric ones or any other. So it will be, it will be adding to greenhouse gas emissions, but all I can do and counter for that, or all I can offer, is to make all the, all flights efficient as possible and make them as limited as possible. And the reality of it is, is it won't be, you know, compared to the automobiles, the trucks coming into Teton County, the hours of operation will be minimal compared to, compared to the automobiles that are here, particularly in the summer months. Wildlife, there has been a lot of studies done on wildlife and the impacts of engine, engine-related activity versus single-person activity in the, in the, in the background. There's a lot of good data out there, there is a lot of good studies on that. So I don't want to try and explain that one away today, but I just know that there are some good studies out there. I think that kind of was hit the gist of it.
Thank you, Tony. Mike, would you mind addressing the question that came out on legal?
No, I think the heart of your question goes to the fact that this airport and all federally assisted airports are required by law to make the airport available to all types, classes, and kinds of aeronautical activity on terms, terms which are not unjustly discriminatory. So there's two parts to that. This board discriminates in a way between different classes. For instance, the contracts we have with airlines and the insurance requirements for airlines are different than the insurance requirements for R-135 charter operators. So there's a discrimination there, but it's reasonable because of the type of, different types of activity. But that's sort of independent from the fact that the airport must make itself available to all types, kinds, and classes of aeronautical activity. Those are two separate requirements. The reasonableness is as to terms. Does that make sense to you?
It does, I just, so we have a particular situation that we're working with, what being in a national park or whatnot, and airport terms that might, maybe particular terms that are reasonable here, that may not be reasoned or thought about elsewhere.
That's precisely correct. Because this is the only airport in a national park, it operates under agreement with the Department of the Interior that imposes certain conditions on this airport. So everybody that operates, every commercial operation that comes out of this airport has to abide by the single event noise limit, cumulative noise limit. The provision that they cannot originate scenic or charter flights over noise-sensitive areas of the park. Those things, because we're in a national park, can be and are imposed, but there are other things beyond that that are framed by federal law.
I have a question still leading off that. How would the noise impacted areas define?
The noise-sensitive areas of the park are defined by the 1983 agreement. There's a line, essentially, it is the Snake River up to Moose, across, and then up to Highway. And everything west of that is noise-sensitive.
And how was that done? Were there studies that said that this area was less sensitive or more sensitive than others?
That was done back in 1983. There was an environmental assessment, and that was a result of negotiations with the Airport Board and the Department of the Interior.
All right, did I hear word that Jim Stanford may have made an arrival? Is that true back there? All right, well, that rumor is not yet true. All right.
One more question?
Yes.
The length of the flights, because you mentioned three to four a day maybe, so how long would each one?
Would you mind standing and projecting, Tony, so everybody can hear? They're, they're back in the hallway, it's a little hard for them.
And repeat the question.
So the question was duration of flight?
Duration for each tour.
Correct, yeah. So the question was duration of flight? The proposal is 30-minute flights, 45-minute flights, one-hour flights. Those are still to be customized and still to be determined.
All right, yes, sir?
You know, I didn't hear anything about his background. From what I read, his 40 hours of instruction is all that's necessary to fly the R-44. To me, that's taking your life, isn't it?
Well, he's been approved by the FAA, but that's, I appreciate your question very much. I'd like to get to the comments.
I asked for his background, his education.
His hours.
Sure, so it's a, it's a good question. My training was done in Wogan, Utah, at Mountain Ridge Helicopters. I have over 500 hours, most of that in the R-44. So, and I am, all five ratings private through commercial instrument, certified flight instructor and certified instrument instructor.
All right, yes, ma'am, in the back.
What provision is being made with the fact that these helicopters will be sharing airspace with so many large jets that plan to be taking off the airport? It's pretty small footprint of an airport, and they even have a more physical track.
One of the more attractive components of a helicopter is that it can pick its own direction and doesn't specifically need the runway to align themselves to depart the area. So as you noticed in Mr. Chambers' diagram, that exit is almost directly to the east of the airport. So in terms of conflicting with other arrival-departing traffic, it would be small. And we are fortunate to have an air traffic control tower to help facilitate that as well. Yes, ma'am?
I did not see that. I live in Multnomah, so I'm a huge stakeholder in this. I did not see that on the pathways. If he has to be a half a mile from where the park is, you know that Spring Falls Road goes right down to golf and tennis and further on, and the park is just to the east of that. So these things that are being said don't fit together to me. If he moves it a half a mile to the west, it's smack over my house. If he moves it any further, he's smack over all the wildlife that are on the Snake River. So I can't be negative enough for my.
I appreciate that comment very much. All right, we'd like to get the public comment pretty darn quick here, but yes, sir, in the back.
Tony, have you ever spent any time in an area that runs these kinds of tours in national, in forested areas where people are hiking and spending time recreating outdoors? Is that what you do?
I have, I have. I've spent time in Moab, I've spent time in the Grand Canyon, and I've hiked in those areas and I've taken helicopter tours in those areas. And I think honestly, like, the Grand Canyon is a beast of its own, for sure. It has quite a number of ops, as people that have been down there know. But the park service down there has done, you know, has followed its policy that it's concentrated its use. And I'll give you an example, just two weeks ago, over the Thanksgiving week, I was in Moab, and I was recreating there for seven days, hiking, canyoning, doing that sort of thing. And I know they have an active helicopter tour operation. It's called Pinnacle Air or Pinnacle Aviation, operates out of their airport to the north of Moab. And in my seven days of recreating there, there was, I never once heard a helicopter, and I one time saw it way in the distance. I don't know if it was the sightseeing helicopter or another helicopter, but.
Don't they have restrictions, and they're not allowed to fly over the general of the Grand Canyon?
Yeah, they have very stringent, well, there they have an air tour management plan, so, in the Grand Canyon. So there, so all the aircraft are following a plan, a specific flight path. They have a designated spot where they go. And if you're rafting the Grand Canyon right in that spot, yes, you're going to see a bunch of helicopters. But the rest of the, over along the Grand Canyon is, you know, you're not going to see the helicopters. That's, that's my experience.
All right, we're going to do one more, and then we need to get the public comment if we can.
I guess, I thought we'd be done, if I could clarify, because we've got the legal resource here from the Airport, and I just wanted to make sure I understand. Once the ability to land and take off in the airport establishes, as long as he's not flying over the park, who controls where he can go and how he can fly? You're not going to control those routes, is that right?
Well, that's the sole authority of the FAA. So the question was, all of you, again, here in the back, is what's going to be in control of that flight once it departs the Jackson Hole Airport? The answer to that question is, the FAA has absolute and complete control over airspace, period. That's federal preemption that once that, whatever aircraft vehicle is at the Jackson Hole Airport, once there's a piece of paper width distance between that tire and the air, they will be under complete FAA jurisdiction.
But I understand that, what I'm saying is, this everybody understands, the FAA isn't going to give him a charter of a route he can fly, right? As long as he's within the general FAA regulations, he can fly where he wants, right?
Well, I think that's one of the reasons that Tony was here tonight, was to talk over those issues and hear your comments about how that can be better.
Yeah, but I'm talking about what's the legal requirement for him to adhere to any certain thing? The routes that were put up there, those aren't the routes that he's legally bound to follow?
Well, there's a key piece here, folks. The reality is that if Mr. Chambers were to volunteer to this community certain behavioral actions that you suggest to him, then the Airport Board can write those into the agreement. But because of federal preemption, we can't force him to put those criteria into his agreement. So he can voluntarily take on additional limitations and restrictions that we can't impose through the Airport Boards of Thor.
And you can't enforce it either?
Okay.
You can't enforce them either?
And force.
Oh, enforce, yes, but we can share those inconsistencies to flight standards in the FAA. So, all right, sir, I'm going to try and like the digits to get to public comment. We've got about 46 minutes left, so.
So this might be a question for Mary, but it's my understanding the park service has undertaken soundscape studies over the last decade. And I'm wondering if that was done in Grand Teton? That's a baseline on which we might add the helicopter sound signature to just see what the sound.
So the question was a soundscape question and whether the park had done anything? And background on that?
I believe this is one of the most thoroughly monitored soundscapes in the national park system. To our environmental impact statement that we did with the airport to allow the use of a greenback climbing station, we did a very in-depth sound analysis performed by a gentleman in the audience, Gary Colick, and a sound ecologist. And so it's analyzed, we do an analysis every year, we monitor it every year. So you have the baseline for sound in this airport. So it's a good baseline, but.
We could take it as a basis for that.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, my name's Susan Clark, I've lived here over 50 years. I've done decades of work on wildlife. Seem to be able to boil down to one simple question at the beginning, which we skipped over and went to the details in the weeds. That front-line question, is this in the common interest? How will this proposal of wildlife, how will it affect air quality? How will it affect noise? What's the justification in the common interest in doing this? In my mind, I can't see one. Any indicator you think of is going to produce more noise, I don't know the air, hospital. I can show you what helicopter noise does. I can't see any reason why we'd want to do this if our standard is in a common interest. There are clearly special interests at play here. So let's go back and look at what's the benefits of doing this to the community.
All right, well, you moved us right into public comment, so thank you for that transition. How we're going to handle this, we put up the ground rules. We're going to ask you to be respectful of the three-minute time period. I've asked Anna Bousing here to acknowledge when we get to one minute remaining on that. Once again, for those of you that might have arrived late, if you've already heard that comment, it's fine to say, I agree with, you know, that person that just spoke or a few moments ago. It's important that we document your thoughts and opinions. And that's the objective tonight. So please take that sincerely. We ask you to be hard on the issues, not on the applicant himself, and that we keep this moving. So with that, Anna will, I'm not exactly sure, she'll raise her hand, all right, to kind of identify when we get to the one-minute mark. And I know one person has been queuing me up for a couple of weeks to go, and so if I could turn the first, first opportunity over to Joe Albright, and if you would come forward and turn toward the crowd as best you're able, so all of you in the back can hear well.
Thank you very much, Jim and Tony. My name is Joe Albright, and I'm the co-owner of the Flat Creek Ranch. Tony has graciously told us that he will not be flying his tours near our ranch. And I accept his word that he would do his utmost to fly the scenic tours safely. Even so, I have formally asked federal authorities to reconsider last summer's FAA letter that he mentioned authorizing him to fly scenic tours in his Robinson R-44 helicopter out of Jackson Hole Airport. I believe that helicopters are relatively safe for many applications, including medevac, search and rescue, and helicopter skiing in specified areas. Yet I believe that Jackson Hole is among the least appropriate places in the country for helicopter scenic tours, and especially in a Robinson R-44. The Robinson R-44, as Tony says, is the best-selling civilian helicopter in the world, in part because it only costs about $400,000 to buy one. In our high environment here, more expensive helicopter models equipped with turbine engines are generally used for search and rescue, firefighting, and helicopter skiing. But the R-44 is powered by an engine that is optimized for flying at sea level. It has a type of engine that loses 3% of its horsepower for every thousand feet above sea, that it flies above sea level, as the FAA has warned pilots in advisory last year. I have plotted, could we put your map of the route up there, Tony? I have plotted Mr. Chambers' approximate flight paths onto Google Earth. I was startled to find that his routes would carry him up to 9,200 feet above sea level. This would mean that if his R-44 skims just 100 feet above the highest ridges on his routes, its engine would be developing less than 75% of its potential horsepower at sea level. If he maintains a safer 1,000-foot clearance above the terrain, his engine would be putting out only about 70% of its potential horsepower, even at full throttle. And by the way, these horsepower figures are from the R-44 engine's own instruction manual. In 16 instances over the last 15 years, NTSB investigators have found that pilots were unable to keep their R-44s from crashing at high altitude, similar to those around Jackson Hole. It wasn't that all those pilots lacked experience. In seven of those 16 accidents, the pilot was an FAA-certified helicopter instruction pilot. Finally, let me point out that an article in today's newspaper confused what I wrote to the feds about the number of fatal scenic tour crashes in R-44 over the last 30 years. Four fatal R-44 accidents with 11 fatalities is the accurate figure. In my opinion, that is worrisome enough, thank you.
All right, yes, ma'am, please.
My name is Beverly Boynton, and I live in Kelly, so obviously, that's a concern. But I think that maybe you could put that map back up, the route map. I think my biggest concern beyond my personal one is that the, two of the flight routes go right into the heart of the magnificent Groveont Wilderness. And there's no houses of people living there, but people recreate there. And there's a lot of horsemen. lot of horsemen who ride through the Groveont, they're perfect for horsepacking trips. There's outfitters who run businesses there. It's a wonderful place, and it's fundamental to a wilderness area that you have quiet and tranquility, that you can hear birds, that you could just hear yourself think. Most of our world has a lot of noise in it. Why can't we keep this part of the world quiet? I don't understand what people have against quiet and tranquility. Thank you.
Please don't applaud specifically, I think it's, we want to make sure that the balance exists in all the comments.
Mike Scheller from Alto, Wyoming, and I'm here representing the Teton Crest Trail. Noise of the Teton Crest Trail is 30 to 40 decibels, and the R-44 is at 70. It's a competing commerce for the airport, because many of these people, these backpackers that come in, fly into Jackson Hole Airport. They will forego going on that Teton Crest Trail, once it becomes obvious that that becomes a new helicopter scenic route. The other problem with it is that they're out there for five days, so Tony's going to be flying over them for five days. Every day, they'll have four times a day, five days a week. That's a ridiculous amount. Teton Crest Trail is one of the national treasures. It's the Pacific Crest Trail, the Appalachian Trail, it's in that regard worldwide. The commerce that they're going to forego, the airport's going to create, is because that money goes to the locals through food purchases, buying hotels before and after, and also transportation throughout parks and areas. They'll go elsewhere. You, the Airport Board, also risk a massive protest with backpackers, environmentalists, voting to use alternative airports when word gets out about this, as this is one of the finest tracks. The operating, second issue, operating ceiling of unlading R-44 is 14,000. I'm not sure exactly what the laden operating ceiling is with four souls and a full fuel load. But as it was mentioned earlier with Joe, he suggested 9,200 feet. It's wrong. It's 10 to 11,000 feet in the area that Tony's proposed. Battleship Mountain, Table, they're all over 11,000 feet. Buck Mountain, and when a helicopter gets in trouble, it can't choose its landing spot, it's going to land where it decides it's going to go. Those are all over 11,000 feet. There is no way on almost all of his trips on that area of Teton Crest Trail, that he will be able to stay over the recommended vertical, 2,000 feet above the land. There is no way. He will dip below that every trip. The third item, does he have a bond that is insurance or insurance sufficient for a cleanup of a helicopter in the wilderness area, or in Grand Teton National Park? Because if he has trouble, he'll end up landing like the glider landed, on the edge of the Tetons. That's a very costly cleanup. That's a very costly cleanup. And I don't want the county, I don't want the county, the FAA, or the state of Wyoming having to pay to clean up the helicopter mess, that will, over time, sooner or later, will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Jim Springer. I am retired, but I worked as a climbing ranger in Grand Teton Park for thirty-five years, and every summer of those thirty-five years, I probably spent three weeks on the crest trail, and patrolling the boundary of Grand Teton National Park. The recommended height to 500 feet is pretty much continuously ignored by motorized aircraft private. I've seen military aircraft fly up jets, Cascade Canyon that I looked down into the cockpits from guides' walls. A lot of different things to cover here. The gliding service that operates out of Driggs frequently flies very low over the Jedidiah Smith Wilderness, and I'm not sure why we think the Jedidiah Smith Wilderness is less valuable for sound in the park. It's kind of the quiet side of the Tetons. Most of the canyons, when you hike, you hear airport noise. When you get up to the crest, is the only area where you actually get away from that sound. The gliders frequently fly very near the peaks, in fact, it's resulted in three fatalities. We talked about those cleanups, and those cleanups are never complete. There's garbage all over near the summit of the Grand, and the backside of the middle As far as helicopters, I've flown hundreds of rescue missions, and if I never get another one, yeah, that'd be great. I've had close calls and dealt with helicopter accidents. But I think primarily, the time I spend, did I get a hand yet? Where's Anna? Is the Golden Eagles, the Peregrine Falcons, the sheep, the quiet that you've experienced on the crest trail, or more specifically, up on the boundary where very few people travel. It's disturbed now by private aircraft, very commonly by the towing of the gliders and other elements, but to add in a continuous helicopter noise, and helicopters make a lot of noise, the air ambulance flies over, and I've flown in them for hundreds of rescue missions, and they're disturbing. And I guess I would just say, I hate to see more.
Thank you very much. Coming up, sir. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Terry Hudgens, I live out north of town, a little area called Teton Cascades. I'm actually the president of the HOA, and we have some concerned residents there. But first, I want to say, thank you, Tony, I think you're being open and direct, and really appreciate that. Our primary concern is noise level. You know, the airport's getting busier and busier, and we have actually residents there who've moved there because they didn't like the noise level where they were previous. They still want to be north of town. And so, you know, my primary concern is, what one gentleman mentioned, is how do we establish the routes that are going to be least impactful from a noise point of view, and how do we hold you to that? So, anyway, thank you for my comment.
Thank you. I'm getting my knee, deep knee bends over here. Yes, ma'am, coming up.
Frances Clark from Wilson, and I do appreciate Tony's good efforts to educate us and bring us up to speed, and I acknowledge that you are really trying to do a good thing by the community. I wish it would be a good thing for the community, but so far, I haven't seen it. I live in Wilson, so part of the route may well be going over my head. I have to say, my sense of helicopters is rescue, people going to the hospital, helicopters for traffic control, because I come from Boston, and also in protests back in the day, and having them over my head. So I don't have a good psychological feeling about helicopters, which I think a lot of people do not. It's like having a pterodactyl over your head. I think there's a bit of just a psychological response to that. I guess I would also have to say, I'm just concerned about providing a thrill, a scenic tour for very few people, with an impact to a great many, and also to the critters of the valley in this very particular beautiful place. And so, I think that's all I have to say, and I do know that you'll listen to us, and I appreciate that. I wish it were a better idea for you, because, you know, I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Frances. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Stephen Fodor, Gaim Creek resident. I'll just say at the outset, I think that it's a good thing that we're all here listening. I'm in support of Tony's proposal, I'm not sure exactly what it'll end up looking like, but I want to make a few comments. First of all, I'm encouraged by the fact that most of the people in this room seem to have gotten the same advice my granddad gave me, which is, don't complain unless you're willing to offer some solutions. And it sounds like some people were willing to offer some constructive criticism or suggestions to Tony to make his operation a little better fitting for this community. The primary concerns I've heard are noise. I think it's also important to recognize that Teton County Land Development Regulations allow 80 decibels at the property line. So let's keep that in perspective, as we're talking about 70 decibels, 1,000 square feet, 1,000 feet up in the air. Safety, well, I think there's at least one person in this room who's quite concerned about safety, because as I checked on this thing, it said owner and pilot, so I suspect that Mr. Chambers is going to be concerned about safety, but that is the purview of the FAA. There's a reason why that governmental entity has been created. Another topic of discussion is disturbance of wildlife, and it's important, that's why we all moved out here. But I'm struck by a few things. I drove by Virginia Lane about 3 o'clock, and there would have been about 10 cars in the parking lot. There's about 200 out there. Us being here is an impact on wildlife. From the first people that came into the valley in the 1800s to today, we're talking about an airport. There's hundreds of flights a day that go from 7:30 in the morning to 9:30 at night. Private jets, commercial jets, all of us who go home for Thanksgiving to see our moms, all of us who drive in and out of the valley have an impact. So let's just keep that in perspective, as we hopefully help Tony perfect and refine his proposal, to make this more fitting for our community, and keeping in mind that this is in the sole purview of the FAA.
Thank you. Who's next?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Peggy DePescuale, and I am a representative of the Wyoming Wilderness Association. And since I heard that the only three people who can make decisions on this are the FAA, Congress, and Tony, I am going to direct my comment to you, Tony. I'm here representing 800 members of the Wyoming Wilderness Association, and thousands of supporters countrywide, who believe in an intrinsic value of the wild places. And although I know that there's been a lot of talk about the National Park, and what impact this will have there, we are so fortunate in Jackson Hole to be surrounded by wild places and wildlife. You can't really kick a stone without hitting a place that's going to be impacted negatively by your proposal. And I think what the research has told me is that, no matter what you do to mitigate your impacts, those impacts are going to have detrimental effects to these lands and to these animals. And so, I'm here to ask you not to submit your proposal at all, and to stand down from bringing this new business idea to Jackson Hole, because I think you're really interested in what we all think. I think that's awesome, and I'm thankful to you for doing it, but you can see what the community wants, and I think you have your answer, and to be a part of this community, I think, is to listen to the people who are trying to send you that message. So, thank you for organizing and being willing to listen to us, but on behalf of Wyoming Wilderness Association, myself, and being a part of this community, I ask that you think twice about how you move forward. Thank you.
We're going to try to hold applause, but thank you for that. Thank you, Peggy. Next.
Hi, my name is Kirk Davenport. Thank you, Tony. I'm the vice chair of the Jackson Hole Conservation Alliance, but I'm here as a Wilson resident, and I just want to echo the prior comments, because I see from the scrapbook that you understand why this place is so magical. We're living in juxtaposition with wildlife, we're living in these wonderful, majestic, peaceful areas. And even though the law permits you to do it, I guess I'm asking you, as your fellow community member, not to monetize this for your own private benefit, because it will have an impact on the wildlife, it will have an impact on everybody who visits here, you will profit from it, and everyone else will give up just a little bit of their peace and the magic of our community. I think what makes this a strong community is that we all resist doing the things that the law allows us to do, and I hope that you will resist here in favor of what's best for the community. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. All right. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Could you please put the map back up?
Are you going to speak to it? Okay. Who's next? Who else would like to join the corps?
Hi. Probably the youngest one in the crowd. I'm Oliver Chambers, Tony's my dad. He did not ask me to come even be here or speak, but I chose to, because I liked being part of the Jackson community. I think the main thing that a lot of people are ignoring in this discussion is that my dad can do this pretty much whether or not you approve it, and he's here just because he wants you, he really wants your input and to help everybody out. And you don't see that with a lot of other recreation in this community, so I think that's a really gracious thing to do. Like with routes, he can change routes, he can totally alter whatever they would be to suit housing and stuff. As far as housing goes, complaints about noise near an airport, I don't really know why you'd buy a house near an airport if you're concerned about hearing any noise. And as far as the common interest goes, Jackson is pretty much the best startup community in the world, as far as money and business opportunity. To resist startups like this would be to resist commerce, basically, and that's sort of a cultural interest that this community has. So, before you make a comment, and I'm not a statistician, I don't, I've flown with my dad quite a bit, I know that his helicopter and the way he operates is quite safe. There's a lot of theoretical limits to how machines can perform, and that's because that is a safety boundary. That doesn't mean as soon as you hit 14,000 feet, helicopter like hits the ceiling and breaks down. It's not true. Noise for wildlife, yeah, and emissions, it's a piston engine, it's not any different than a car. If you add one more car to Teton County, saying that the emissions is going to add a lot, it's like, okay, then don't buy a second car. And by 78 decibels, there are louder automobiles on the road than that. And as far as safety goes, 500 hours is quite a bit of experience, when you think about it. There are many drivers on the road now, and yes, it's a different vehicle, but you have 200 new high schoolers at the moment that don't know how to drive, and they're a lot more likely to hit you than a helicopter, so that doesn't make much sense to me. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up.
So, Peter Austin, and in the last 20 years that I've been coming here, living here, I see this as one big step towards an amusement park environment, period.
Thank you. All right. Wave the map. Come on forward, please.
Thank you. Hi, y'all. My name is Noah Colas, I was raised over in Sublet County, and now up in Jackson full-time, and kind of building on what O said, what's to stop Tony from going and doing this in any other airport, you know, say Pinedale, Alpine, and Victor, and like I stated before, what's the, you know, it's really good that he's actually coming to us and asking our opinions, and why, you know, I think it's a very good opportunity for all of us to give him constructive criticism on what our thoughts are, and really help him nail down what would be a good plan for the entire community, because, you know, he can go out tomorrow and be running, doing routes from Alpine, or Pinedale, let's say, and go and, you know, not take our input at all, and, you know, it's a really good opportunity for us all to try and make, set a good precedent for us to have this new business coming into our community. Thank you.
All right. Anyone in the way back want to come forward? Yes, of course, Sharon, good to see you.
Thanks, Jim. Tony, you and I had the opportunity to meet, I'm sorry, Sharon Mader, I represent the National Parks Conservation Association, and I really did appreciate sitting down and talking about your proposal and possibilities for improvement, but at that time, I did make it clear that we could not support heli tours over Grand Teton National Park. And the lands around the park are very noise-sensitive, and extremely important as well. You've certainly heard from the local community and the local sentiment, and there's also a national community that supports national parks across the country. We are the primary advocacy group for the National Park System, and yes, there are rules that allow takeoffs and landings from airports. This is the only national park in the country, so this is something really important for you to consider. And I would just remind you that rules with agencies like the FAA can be forced to change, and Congress can take action as well. So, that's where groups like mine come into the picture. But I think as a community, I would like to see you listen to the voices here, and really consider whether this is the right proposition for Jackson Hole and Grand Teton National Park. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Sharon. Yes, ma'am. We might? And then next up is the Boston Red, um, Red Sox fan there.
Well, Tony, I appreciate you coming and, uh, you know, meeting the community and everything. And everybody, I think the majority of the people here, you know, are against you.
Franny. If we can get your name.
Oh, my name's Franny, huh? Sorry. I've lived in Jackson for about fifty years. And when I first came to town, the airport was teeny. And it was, it was really nice to be out north of town. And today, the airport is as big supposedly as it can be, but it is very, very noisy. And, um, it's getting noisier all the time. And just the entire area of, uh, you know, what is surrounding wilderness, it's really nice to be able to go out and get some peace and quiet. Um, but it is still hard to get peace and quiet. Um, even when you're out in the backcountry, you do hear lots of, you know, noise. I mean, the other day I was up in the Grovontz and you can hear the airplanes taking off, you know? I mean, and I'm sure you're gonna be able to hear your helicopters taking off and landing. And, uh, I just think we all have a responsibility, living in this area, to try to preserve it as much as possible. And I know the Rockefellers, when they bought Grand Teton Park and allowed the airport, they had no idea what the airport was gonna be like today. Or I'm sure that they probably would have put more limitations on it than they were able to. But, uh, I just think it's important for you to really listen to the community that's here tonight because, you know, you can go ahead and go forward, but it's just gonna be an uphill battle for you. You know, there's, people are gonna be fighting every step of the way. And, uh, that's what happened to the last guy, you know? So, anyway, I would encourage you to, uh, listen to the voices here tonight and, and try to run your, your operation in some other place that, that might be helpful for you.
Thank you very much, Franny. Come on up. You took the Boston hat off.
My name's Julian. I've been here for about three years. And basically, I'm gonna, there is, uh, obviously the noise effect. However, I did work at the Grand Canyon for a summer. I did go out as much as I could. However, every time I was out, I could hear the helicopters. And every time I was on the rim, I didn't wanna be there because I could hear them and see them. So my point is, we don't really need more of a visual distraction because that really takes away from the be, seeing the beauty of this area with your own eyes. And on top of that, taking a helicopter tour, I don't believe adds much to appreciating the wilderness area that we have because it's so much more appreciated from the ground up. And from having worked at the Grand Canyon, I understand why. And having been to Moab and Canyonlands, I understand why those areas are great for helicopter and private aircraft tours because you can see everything from the sky. However, here, you're seeing the top of the mountain and you're not seeing what's inside of it. The animals, the flowers, the different types of trees. You're not actually experiencing anything that we live here for.
Thank you. Yes, of course.
Thanks. So I'm Wendy Kelly and I'm representing myself. Um, I want to recognize the agencies, individuals, and the many organizations that seek to do great work in this county, providing opportunities for many while striving to conserve the incredible resources for all generations. Your efforts are, are truly commendable. My remarks are regarding the several potential impacts that have been mentioned. There are people who would prefer to hear the sound of a song playing from their fellow recreationist's phone while they're hiking or skiing in the Teton Range. I'm sure we've all heard those playing as you hike by somebody and somebody's playing their music. While other recreationists would opt to hear the distant drone of a helicopter flying east of Highway one ninety-one, a noise that they might not even be aware of. If you would close your eyes now, please, just take a moment, and imagine hiking your favorite trail. Off in the distance, you can hear the drone of a helicopter. You might be annoyed. However, does your heart suddenly race and do you get stressed? Likely not. Now imagine having a relaxing dinner with your family when suddenly someone crashes through the window. Would this stress you? Would your heart suddenly begin to race? And would you leap up with a fight or flight reaction? Most likely, yes. If you close your eyes, please go ahead and open them. I'm trying to illustrate that research su- suggests that wildlife have similar responses. In other words, when they hear an engine off in the distance, they become aware that something is out there. And as it approaches, they might take cover. However, if, for example, a moose is browsing and a Nordic skier comes around the corner through the willows, the moose will likely experience more stress and a fight or flight response than the moose that hears an engine off in the distance. I know there are concerns about the carbon footprint, concerns that should be, should not be ignored. However, we must also look at our individual and collective footprints. Batteries and hybrid and electric vehicles have to be disposed somewhere. And your home is heated, right? Consider some of the impacts associated with renewable energy. From the extraction of the raw materials used to create wind turbines to impacts on wildlife migration corridors. And recognize that the terrestrial footprints don't just go away even after a turbine is decommissioned. How about the many showy flames I see burning in front of businesses throughout this county? Which admittedly, I enjoy seeing, but what gives them energy? What are their emissions? I am not trying to be critical of any source of energy that I've noted. I simply want to emphasize that our energy use has an impact even if we don't see, hear, or smell it. Regarding overcrowding and too much tourism, that's a comment that I've heard prior to tonight. I have two experienced overcrowded roads and trails. The issue doesn't stop there. In fact, Representative Summers has presented a draft bill to regulate commercially guided fishing boats due to significant growth on our rivers and the need to responsibly protect and manage the resource. The point is, people still drive on the roads, hike the trails, and we will still get to float and fish the rivers. However, public transportation is being provided and some parking lots are being managed so as to cap the number of hikers in the area. In other words, we didn't just put up roadblocks and shut down Teton County. Instead, we have put, we've used our collective intelligence to overcome challenges and issues as they arise. And Wind River Air's proposal shouldn't be an exception. The reality is the industry is already here. And so instead of making Tony the straw man, or Wind River Air specifically, let's have civility and work to, as leaders, and to be the leaders we say we are, partnering with Tony to develop a scenic flight business that works for the residents and visitors of Teton County and lead scenic flight industry now and into the future. And as a native of the equality state and lifelong outdoors woman, I hope I can look back at this moment with pride of the county taking the lead.
Thank you very much. All right.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Hale. I lived at Tahoe for a while. And there's a beautiful spot at Tahoe, Emerald Bay, on the southwest part of the lake. I was sitting up the top of the cliff, the north side of Emerald Bay, uh, having lovely lunch with people, very quiet, talking about things that were important to our community. And a helicopter suddenly came out of the blue. It was terrifying. I'll never forget it. Like a huge monster. I couldn't understand how they could be flying at Emerald Bay. It's such a beautiful spot. Anyway, I'll never forget it. And I'm sure one could feel the same way up at the top of the Tetons.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. All right. Come on forward, please. Now there's a bit of an obstacle that we've created.
Can you do a straw boot so they can get a proportional, uh, understanding of where are the seven minutes?
We'll look at that in a few minutes. We're gonna finish public comment first, please.
So my name is Jeremy. I've lived here nineteen years. I just came to see what was going on tonight. I didn't think I was gonna be talking. Um, I spend a lot of time outdoors, as I think everyone does here. I own a home in East Jackson. I also am a supervisor managing a whole bunch of really loud diesel buses. I can tell you guys, another thing about me is I hike up Crystal View a whole bunch. My wife says I hike up there too much, excessively. So a big diesel bus, it's pretty loud. But a helicopter flying over by the hospital, right over my house, which I hear a lot, which wakes me up in the middle of the night, they're way louder than a diesel bus or any other vehicle that I know of here in Teton County. So, those are kind of my thoughts. I hike in, I was in September, Jedidiah Wilderness, I mean, whatever. You guys all go outdoors. We all know the scoop. Um, it's not fun to see helicopters or, sorry, not directing, actually, helicopters because I don't see them too much. But it's not fun to see planes and stuff flying overhead. I guess I do have one final, uh, helicopter story. I also like to row boats. And I row boats through the Grand Canyon. Kinda wanna do that all the time also. Bob's the only person here I know from my work life and I'll just tell everyone that, Bob, I just wanna put my job in row boats in the Grand Canyon. Um, that's what I really wanna do. But when you get down about two-thirds of the way through the Grand Canyon, you start seeing lots and lots and lots of helicopters. And it changes the experience. Um, I feel like it would change the experience here as well. So, those are, that's my two cents.
Appreciate that very much. All right. In the back, please. Uh, thanks for a little giddy up in your step there.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate it. It shows that your heart's in a place, um, when listening to the local stakeholders. Um, though, in terms of concrete, um, yeah, my name's Sarah. I live here, I work here, I play here. Um, so, in terms of concrete things that you could do to probably help appease some of the people who are concerned here, um, when you were talking about your planned flight paths, I heard nothing about input from local stakeholders or local conservation communities. Um, you know, you say you have complete free will over where those can go. And yes, while you're legally required to avoid the Grand Teton National Park, you're also going right to Bridgeton National Forest, the Smith Wilderness, like all these areas have animals too. It would be all too convenient if all of our protected species lived in the national park, but they don't. And those animals don't have a voice. And so, while clearly the community feels one way, um, the impact of sound over those national protected areas, uh, I think would have a greater impact that we aren't really getting a sense of right now. Um, second, I would like to speak to a sentiment that I've heard a couple of times, um, about ecological impact. And yes, we all presumably drive cars. If you ride a bike at this time of year, God bless you. Um, but to think that one more, the impact of one more vehicle is marginal, marginal because we all drive cars, is a logical fallacy. Um, to think that just because we all have an effect on the environment doesn't mean it's worth trying to prevent, uh, further impact on the environment, I think is a non-starter. And it kind of negates any positive change towards having a more sustainable community and environmental effect on the community. So, the, one of the key differences between a helicopter and a car is I can't drive my car all the way up to the middle of Teton. Um, so I would like you all to think about that. Um, in addition, like if ninety-nine people have died already and you say, oh, what's one more? I think that's kind of the same logical fallacy that you're using. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Chris Peacock. I live north of town. Um, I concur with many of the statements that are concerned about environmental impact, community impact, animal impact, in and out of the park because, like he said, Bridgeton, going out Provant. There's tons of backcountry back there that people like to enjoy. And, um, I guess that was it.
Thank you very much. Additional folks that'd like to comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, Tony. My name's Chris Harder. I'm a recently retired Grand Teton National Park ranger. Like Jim Springer, I've done a lot of flying in around the Teton area. Um, a lot of people have a lot of good impact tonight, but don't let this stop here. Um, these guys have been telling you to write your congressman, write your, write to the FAA. That's where it needs to go. And one thing that's in your pocket is your phone. And take pictures. Right, Angus? Take pictures of this, this activity you see. Tony's operation is just another grain of sand. It's adding to a problem that's, we've all seen grow. So, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. All right. Yep, come on up. Uh, thank you, I'm Franz Combsen, uh, almost a fifty-year resident here now. Um, Tony, I really appreciate your coming here and listening and, you know, opening yourself up to this. Also thanking the board for putting this together and the libraries for opening your doors and not doing a headcount. Uh, anyway, I just wanna emphasize the quietness and that's what we're really losing. In my fifty years of being here, it used to be really quiet. You'd hear the airport occasionally, it seems like. Now it seems to be one of the major noise factors in the valley and it's hard to get away from. And I think, uh, the quiet, uh, most of us don't even recognize anymore true quiet is really an endangered experience. And we get used to and expect noise on the road because that's, you know, what we all are part of. And we expect it in certain places. But when we go to other places, like inner park and inner backcountry, in the wildlands, that's not what we wanted, it's not what we expected. Uh, and I, I'll go back to what Dr. Clark mentioned early on here. What is the purpose of this? What community good is it? Have we just taken ourselves back to that basic question? Helicopters, we know they're here, they're flying out of the hospital, they're in search of rescue fire and all that. And that's again, what we expect. But what we're seeing here tonight as a proposal is really what I call a luxury. And I think it's a luxury that this community doesn't want and I don't think the environment can afford. So, thank you. Thank you, Franz. Additional? Come on forward, please.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Megan Day. I've lived here for less than a month. And I moved out here from Long Island, New York. Now, I don't know what you guys know about Long Island, New York, but I live five miles from the New York City, like the line of New York City. It's nothing but loud. There is no quiet. That's why I came out here. One of the most incredible experiences I've had since moving out here was me, my two housemates, and our dog. We drove out past Kelly into the national forest. And we were stopped and we were talking. And then my housemate, he said, listen, what do you hear? And we could list three things that we heard. We heard the amazing river, we heard the wind in the trees, and we heard a bird which I was not expecting considering the snow on the ground, but we heard it. It frightens me to think that if this goes through, we won't hear that bird. We won't hear the wind. We might hear the river still because that was pretty loud. But the other things will be drowned out and those other things really matter. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. All right. Come on forward, please.
Hi, um, I'm Caroline Corboy. Um, I lived in Chicago in twenty sixteen, two blocks from Wrigley Field. And I'm not sure if you know what happened in two thousand sixteen in Wrigley Field, but the Cubs won the World Series, which meant for the entire month of October, five AM news helicopters show up. They hover directly above my apartment until the news is over with their morning thing. Then noon comes and the tourist helicopters come and they're flying around. Then the game's at seven, helicopters show up at five. They hover again until six because there's a window one hour before, one hour after the game. Then they show back up around ten and they stay until midnight. And I can just say, as someone who's like lived through a whole month of six hours of helicopters flying around, it's very, very unpleasant. And I don't think that anyone here is going to expect that level of helicopter traffic. Um, but I can just say, it's not something I would wish for any of us to experience again.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Gary Cofinas, resident of Wilson, Wyoming. Forty-five years ago, um, I was a young buck and arrived and I traveled a lot of that green line on the west side and up and the peaks and so on and so forth, um, taking young people in the mountains to give them wilderness experiences and learn about the natural history. I'm interested to see, how many of you oppose the proposal? Raise your hands, please. How many of you are in favor? Bring your hands now. Let the record show that it is, apart from two or three folks who have personal relationships, that there are people opposed. I want to make a couple random points, or disconnected points. One is, I don't think we should talk about... One is, I don't think we should talk about flying over the park, it's a big deal. It's, it's, it's not the shadow of the helicopter, it's the sound of the helicopter which will go much further than the boundary of the park. The second is, impacts to wildlife are really hard to quantify using studies with sound impacts. So, we might want to, there, there is work that's done, but it's still really difficult. And finally, a point that hasn't been made, we have a member of our family, she's got four legs. And when the SAR helicopter flies over my house, which is right under this, her behavior freaks out. She is a fearful dog and she goes nuts. So, four flights a day or whatever is gonna, will have an impact on my household. Not a great idea, I ask that you not do it, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Additional comments? Yes. Are you good?
So, my name is Susan Danford and I've lived here thirty-three years. And I am a born and bred Westerner and a visitor of wilderness. And I went to the trouble to hike from the top of Haliakala to the ocean over two days. And as long as there was light, there were flying helicopters. It was not what you would expect of the experience of interacting with the environment of a volcano. And it was very disappointing. And I am willing, I lived near the airport. Yes, I know I lived near the airport. Go ahead and fly over my house. I want to be able to go into the wilderness, into the Provence, and not have to listen to airplanes of any kind. I think the wilderness experience is extremely important to the souls of the people of this world. And I want to continue. I'm seventy-six and I'm still willing to hike my butt out there to have that experience. And I don't want to lose that.
Thank you very much. All right, Brooke, I think you were very patient, thank you.
I'm running that crowd before anyone can beat me. Hi, so my name's Brooke Sausen, I'm with the Jackson Hole Conservation Alliance. And Tony, I want to thank you for coming here, you're a very brave man. And I want to thank you for all the extra effort that you've done to consult my organization, National Parks Conservation Association and others. And we appreciate that you reached out to us to see if there was a compromise. And just as we told Tony, unfortunately, there's no compromise that we can find that would make the inherent safety, human and environmental risks worth this heli operation. For example, an investigative piece by the Los Angeles Times describes a Robinson forty-four, the same helicopter you fly, as leaving all major models at the highest fatal accident rate from 2006 to 2016. This isn't just because it's one of the best-selling. This was a, a study that looked at per 100,000 flight hours, what is the most dangerous? And that would be the Robinson forty-four. And as we've heard from others here tonight, in the last thirty years, we've seen thirty-six helicopter crashes with 125 men, women, and children killed. Those are not just numbers, those are very real and lasting losses to the people in our community. We've experienced that here, unfortunately, in 2012 when we lost a search and rescue volunteer during a helicopter crash. And we firmly at the Alliance believe that there's no view from the air worth the lives of our visitors or our rescuers. And the environmental risk is no less severe. Although the response to different species varies, animals are sensitive to noise. And according to Pennsylvania State University, grizzly bears show the greatest response of any species studied. But even for species that maybe don't freak out the first time, over time, this can lead to chronic stress, which is a much more detrimental pervasive condition that directly impacts their health, growth, and reproductive fitness. The very basic things they do to survive. And these impacts would follow wildlife into the heart of our wilderness areas, not just the park. Heli tours also come with the risk of an even greater threat to humans and wildlife, fire. A different article by the Los Angeles Times describes how dozens of people have been killed in post-impact fires, even in crashes that were otherwise survivable. And in our wilderness areas and over our remote areas, a crash like that could start a wildfire that would further threaten our community and our public lands. We know as a pilot that you decide where and when and with who to fly. And we trust that you place the highest value on your safety because you want to go home to your family, you want to go home to your son. But the safety decisions that you make for yourself and for your pilots, that's a decision you also make for everyone in this community. And I think from listening to our community tonight, that that's not a decision that we're comfortable with you making. We know that you want to do right by us and that you want to provide heli tours in a way that is of service to our community. But I, I know you've been hearing from us and I know you'll keep hearing from us. And I have to ask, at what point have you heard from our community? And at what point do you decide that this is not a decision you want to make?
Thank you Brooke. All right, we've run a little bit over on time. Is there anyone here who believes their perspective and point of view has not been shared? With that, okay, Albre, you have something in mind?
Just a little bit.
All right, well then, you need to share it. We want to make sure we get it right.
Just one thing to point out. As for a show of hands, which is totally understandable, that's also called an convenient sample. If you go to the product, like a product you want to buy on Amazon and you see a bunch of five-star ratings, a bunch of one-star ratings, that's because everybody who's in the title is not represented because they don't care enough to comment. So keep that in mind on the record, that everyone here is probably here not because they feel mediocre about the topic. There's a few that feel very strongly for it and a lot that feels very strongly against it. That's pretty present in this community when anything is introduced.
All right, thank you everybody. Let me see if I can take a stab at summarizing what has been covered tonight. So, please listen through this list and see if it's comprehensive as, as feedback. Concern over peace and quiet slash noise impacts. Respect for nature and its animals. Safety. Roots and control over roots over time. Future operations and what they might look like. And then emissions. Did I miss anything on that list if you view it from kind of a Big Ten perspective? Send this board. I'm just trying to summarize what your feedback was tonight, that's all. Thank you.
There was a lot more feedback than that. You're not going to give back or something.
I was just trying to hit the high points of the waves there. So we documented the meeting tonight, so we've got the ability to go back.
You might want to re-listen to what we all said because you missed about ten to twenty points there. That were not part of those three ideas.
All right, well we'll absolutely do that. I was just trying to keep my notes as we flow along, yes sir.
My main question is, how is it going to benefit the people in the community?
Right.
I mean, he hasn't said what the price is going to be to go fly it. Is he going to invite me up and say, I'm taking you up to $10 or something?
All right, community benefit, got it, all right.
What you missed was, I specifically gave you reasons that the airport board could use to reject his request. And specifically, how it will be in competition with the backknockers who fly into your airport.
All right, so economic, all right.
And I also gave you an opportunity to recognize that there's a cost to crashes. And the cost to crashes are being picked up by us, okay? When he's not bonded correctly or insured correctly, okay? Those, the cost to the environment is permanent. But if the cost of sending people in to pick up all the pieces and the dead bodies and everything else is very expensive.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Mr. Braun.
Yes sir, this is being recorded. We'll capture all memory.
I appreciate that.
It's being recorded, yes ma'am.
I just wanted you to remember that it's absolutely horrifying to be surprised by a helicopter.
Very good, thank you for that. All right. With that, we've run a little bit long. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge, Mary.
I just, I'll go to the front, you know, I let everybody else go do that, so. Just a few thoughts. I want you to know that I've heard of a lot of the concerns, the statements, the deep community values that we all share here in Jackson. And as an individual, I just wanted to say that I've only lived here sixteen years, unlike a few of you. And I wanted to also mention that I spent a lifetime managing national parks. It was my great pleasure and honor to do that along with people like Jim Springer, Chris Harder, Gary Pollack, and others who are here tonight. There's a point where we have legal, we could be in that meeting. There's a point where there's legal requirements, statutory requirements, and then you're confronted with your moral compass. And what is your gut saying? And at least, the sense that I have, that this is an incompatible and inappropriate use in any national park, adjacent to a national park, in the national forests, in the refuge, in wilderness and over wilderness areas. And as was iterated before, I'm very concerned about conflict with Teton County SAR operations, lifesaving rescue operations. And very concerned about the Jenny Lake Rangers and their ability to save our lives. So thank you for all your comments tonight, and I'll turn it back to Jim.
Thank you very much, everyone. We're grateful that you came out and shared your thoughts. It's very valuable information, very positive to have that reinforcement about what your feelings are. With that, I'll close down the meeting. All I can say is that I wish you the very best for this holiday season, for you and your family. Let it be safe and happy. Have a good night.